Councilmember Marie.
Hi.
Hey, everybody, we are live.
Hi.
Let me explain what's going on in a second.
Hi.
And Council President Bass.
Hi.
And that item was approved with eight eyes to be withdrawn and rescheduled to the July 11th council meeting.
Thank you. Okay.
Through the chair, I just want to say thank you to Ms. Mayberry for all of her work on this. I know that she's been working hard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. That is one item. Last, we still have a lot more at this time. Madam Clerk, I would like to ask you to read in the consent calendar. Actually, if you could hold off, I do see we have a hand up. I want to make sure we hear, we need to hear this first. Bradley Johnson?
Thank you, Council President. We would request that item 2.29 be pulled from the consent calendar and actually eventually scheduled to the July 19th council meeting. As we noted the prior time when this was heard its first reading, the local measures need to be adopted after the council certifies the election for Measure C, which is not happening at this meeting. So I wanted to get that on, that request on now. This is the appropriate time.
Okay, and you want to withdraw this item and move it to which meeting?
The July 19th council meeting, the last one of the term for second reading.
Okay, I do see two other hands up. Let's hear from the city administrator and then the city attorney's office. Administrator Raskin?
Thank you, Madam President. You made reference to this at the start of the meeting. I don't know if it needs to be done here, but we'd also like to move S 2.32 to the July 19th council meeting. So in case you can need a motion and can do that together with the other item, just wanted to remind you of that.
Yes. Okay, let's hear from the city attorney's office, Mitesh Bakta.
Thank you, President Bass. Once the clerk has read in the consent calendar, I have a very minor technical update to make to item 2.18. So if the clerk could please give me screen share at that time after she has read in the calendar. Thank you.
Yes, we are noting that. Okay.
I'm listening for this is going to move.
I will make a motion to move item 2.29, to withdraw item 2.29 and move it to the July 19th meeting, and also to withdraw item S 2.32 and move it to the July 19th meeting.
Hold on a second.
Is there a second?
Okay, I believe that was Councilmember Gao. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
And that.
Okay.
And that was a motion by Councilmember President Bass and Councilmember Gao to withdraw and reschedule item 2.29 fiscal year 2023 local measure EN, Library QZDP, D Parks Q and Measure AA, as well as item S 2.32 12th Street remainder parcel ENA with East Bay Asian Local Development Corporation to the July 19th city council agenda on consent. Councilmember Fife?
Hi.
Excuse me, Clerk, those two items are on consent and I believe they will remain on consent.
All right, thank you for that correction. On consent, Councilmember Fife?
Hi.
Councilmember Gao?
Hi.
Call?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Kaplan?
Hi.
Councilmember Marie?
Hi.
Taylor?
Hi.
President Pro Tintao?
Hi.
And Council President Bass?
Hi.
And item 2.29, S 2.32 will be withdrawn and rescheduled to the July 19th on the consent calendar.
Thank you, and we are now ready to read in the consent calendar, Madam Clerk.
Okay.
Starting with item 2.3, a resolution renewing and continuing the city council's declaration of a local emergency due to the existence of HIV and AIDS. Item 2.4, a resolution renewing the city council's declaration of a local public health emergency with respect to safe and affordable access to medical cannabis in the city of Oakland. Item 2.5, a resolution renewing and continuing the city council's declaration of a local emergency due to the existence of homelessness. Item 2.6, a resolution renewing and continuing the city council's determination that conducting in-person meetings of the city council and its committees represent imminent risk to attendees' health and electing to continue conducting meetings using teleconferencing in accordance with California Government Code, Section 54953, a provision of AB 361. Item 2.7, a resolution honoring Shanae Franklin Minor for her outstanding service in the city of Oakland as manager of the city's rent adjustment program. Item 2.8, a resolution congratulating Jennifer Loog on appointment as city attorney for the city of Mountain View and expressing profound gratitude for Jennifer's stellar service in the city of Oakland as a deputy city attorney in the litigation division and as supervising attorney for the general government and financial and the backside of the city's attorney office. Item 2.9, an ordinance amending municipal code, Section 10.36.140, to add the following streets to the list of, excuse me, approved parking meter zones. Bellevue Avenue from Perkins Street to Grand Avenue. Lakeshore Avenue from MacArthur Boulevard to Lake Merritt Boulevard. Lake Merritt Boulevard from East 12th Street to Oak Street and Lakeside Drive. From 17th Street to Jackson Street and Section 10.36.090, to remove Sundays as holidays in support of districts that would benefit from all week parking meter management, but restricting Sunday meters to be enforced after 12:00 p.m. and Sections 10.36.015 and 10.36.020 to add pay by plate as a meter payment method and adopting appropriate sequel findings. Item 2.10, an ordinance amending salary schedule ordinance, number 12187, to add the full-time classification of Inspector General program and performance audit manager, the full-time classification of Inspector General program and performance auditor. The full-time classification of Inspector General policy analyst, the full-time classification of family services specialist, the full-time classification of special activity permit technician, the permanent part-time and part-time equivalent classifications of community intervention specialist, the permanent part-time and part-time equivalent classifications of emergency medical tech, and amend the title of the full-time classification of environmental services analyst, assistant recycling program specialist one, the title of the full-time classification of recycling specialist, recycling program specialist two, the title of the full-time classification of municipal code enforcement officer to special activity permanent inspector, the title of the full-time classification of head start, early head start, substitute teacher to head start, early head start, associate instructor. The title of the permanent part-time classification of head start, early head start, substitute instructor, permanent part-time to head start, early head start, associate instructor. Permanent part-time, the title of part-time classification of head start, early head start, substitute teacher, part-time to early head start, head start, associate instructor. Part-time and amend the salary of the part-time classifications of senior aide and temporary contract services employee to ensure compliance with the city of Oakland's minimum wage and amend the salary of the classification of council members to ensure compliance with Oakland Public Ethics Commission Charter mandated salary adjustment. Item 2.11, a resolution awarding construction contracts to raise electric for highway safety improvement program.
I'm not going to answer, I got this phone, I need to go downstairs, I'll be right back.
Project number 1004700, the lowest responsible response to bidder. In accordance with project plan, participation state requirement, and with contract is getting an amount of $1,783,021.25 and adopting appropriate sequel findings. Item 2.12, a resolution authorizing the city administrator to accept an appropriate sustainable transportation equity project grant fund in the amount of $7,665,371.99, implement the West Oakland Stat Program administered by the California Air Resources Board, and enter into a professional services agreement with Oakland Parks and Recreation Foundation as a fiscal agent for the West Oakland Environmental Indicators Project, Urban Biofilter and the West Oakland Green Initiative in an amount not to exceed $2,884,200.00 entering to a professional services agreement with the crucible in an amount not to exceed $364,329.95 and waive the city's competitive request for proposals and qualification selection process and allocate $2,893,956 in local match and adopt appropriate sequel findings. Item 213, adopt the following pieces of legislation. A resolution approving the fiscal year 21 through 22 annual reports of the Lakeshore Lake Park Business Improvement Management District of 2012, the Jack London Improvement District, the Timiscow Telegraph Business Improvement District 2015, the Laurel Business Improvement District 2016, the Koreatown North Gate Community Benefit District 2017, the Oakland Tourism Business Improvement District 2018, the Downtown Oakland Community Benefit District 2018, and the Lake Merritt Uptown Community Benefit District 2018. Advisory boards and confirming the continuation annual assessment for each said district and for the Chinatown Community Benefit District 2021, with the exception of the Letcher District that is expiring for fiscal year 22 through 23, and levying said assessments increasing the Jack London District, Timiscow District, Coontown District, Downtown Oakland District, Lake Merritt Uptown District by 5% for the 22 through 23 assessment and authorizing payment of the city's cumulative fiscal year 22 through 23 fair share assessment in an approximate amount of $389,453.67 for sitting on properties in the Jack London District, the Timiscow District, Koreatown District, the Downtown Oakland District, the Lake Merritt Uptown District, and the Chinatown District, and renewing the agreements with the districts for administration and disbursement fund and in Oakland Redevelopment Successor Agency Resolution authorizing payment of Oakland Redevelopment Successor Agency cumulative fiscal year 22 through 23 fair share assessment in an appropriate amount, I'm sorry, approximate amount of $2,871.20 for one Oakland Redevelopment Successor Agency owned property in the Downtown Oakland Community Benefit District 2018. Item 214, a resolution authorizing the city administrator to finalize and execute a prepaid debit card marketing and processing agreement and a contract purchasing agreement with USIO and a contract purchasing agreement with Clipper in support of the West Oakland Universal Basic Mobility Pilotate Project financial incentive in the amount of 1,000 restricted prepaid debit cards and/or Clipper cards for a period of one year at a total contract amount of $350,000, providing the necessary spending authority for the contract one-year duration and waiving the advertising bidding and the risk, I'm sorry, request for qualification proposal competitive selection requirements. Item 215, receive an information report on providing plumbing to interim homeless sites. Item 218, a resolution supporting House Resolution 7910, protecting our kids, which makes various changes to federal firearm laws, including establishing new criminal offenses and expanding the types of weapons and devices that are subject to regulation in order to quell since this acts of gun violence. Item 217, a resolution celebrating the 50th anniversary of Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972, which seeks to guarantee equality in educational programs and activities regardless of sex and celebrating the powerful impacts of Title IX since its enactment in 1972 and encouraging additional work to further gender equality in education programs and school-based athletics. Item 218, a resolution amending Resolution Number 89202, which among other things submitted to the voters of the November 8th, 2022 general municipal election and ordinance repealing and replacing Chapter 5.04 from the Oakland City, I'm sorry, from the city staff and directing city clerk stake on necessary actions to prepare for and conduct the November 8th general election. Item 2.9, a resolution authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with the County Valamita Fire Department for Oakland Fire Department to provide emergency services within the city of Emeryville for the period of July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2024, and for such services to be compensated in the amount of $437,541 with two one-year options to extend the agreement and accept inappropriate above referenced. Item 220, a resolution amending Resolution Number 89241, which allocated funds and authorized affordable housing development loans for new construction projects in a total amount not to exceed $30,561,000 to authorize an additional allocation in an amount not to exceed $7 million and an additional affordable housing development loan for the 2700 International Boulevard Project contingent on funding from the 2022 State Local Housing Trust Fund. Item 221, adopt the resolution accepting and appropriating direct loan, I'm sorry, direct local program distribution, measure BB funds in the amount of $2,646,058 for fiscal year 22 through 23, the Alameda County Transportation Commission to provide pair transit services and awarding agreements for pair transit services for fiscal year 22 through 23 in the amount of $850,000, $600,000, $150,000, $50,000, $25,000, and $100,000 and awarding a grant agreement to the city of Emeryville for pair transit services in an amount of $50,000 and authorizing the city administrator to accept and appropriate any additional direct local distribution funds that may become available from the same funding source for the same purposes for fiscal year 22 through 23 and authorizing the city administrator to increase the award amounts and authorize amendments of a formative agreement accordingly with their terms. Item 2.22, a resolution authorizing the city administrator to apply for and accept a state of California standard agreement in the amount of $1,976,364 and enter into an agreement number MS223-01 with the State of California Department of Aging for the multi-purpose senior services program for fiscal year 22 through 23 and waiving the city's competitive procurement process and authorizing the city administrator to appropriate, I'm sorry, to procure related goods and award professional services agreements to private entities for fiscal year 22 through 23 and adding one FTE case manager, increasing from .5 FTE to one FTE administrative assistant one, and increasing .80 FTE to one FTE case management supervisor in the Human Services Department to meet CDA requirement and authorizing a contribution from the General Purpose Fund in an estimated amount of $509,601 for essential services overhead charges and authorizing the city administrator to accept and appropriate any additional funds that become available from CDA within the agreement terms of July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023 for the same purpose and amend the standard agreement with CDA to increase the amount. Item 2.23, a resolution awarding grant agreements to 26 nonprofit and public agencies to provide services until June 30, 2024 to address the impact and reduce consumption of sugar sweetened beverages in a total amount not to exceed $3 million using sugar sweetened beverages distribution tax revenue in the amount not to exceed $1 million from fiscal year 21 through 22 revenues and $2 million from fiscal year 22 through 23 revenues. Item 2.24, a resolution authorizing directing the city attorney to compromise and settle the following claims in the case of anti-police here project. Community Ready Corp, Shawn Kennedy, Michael Cohen, Michael Cooper, Andrea Constato, Jonathan Farmer, Lindsay Fellowitz, Daniel Gaito, Katie Johnson, Breonna Kelly, Jennifer Lee, Ian McDonald, Melissa Meyer, Lindsay Morris, Leah Motley, Nikio Nado, Azizi Go, Nicole Puller, Maria Ramirez, Akil Riley, Erin Rogers Chesky, Tara Rose, Ashwin Lupin, Daniel Sanchez, Christina Stewart, Tyia Stewart, Catherine Suey, Celeste Wong, Kui Chu Zhang, on behalf of themselves and similarly situated individuals versus the city of Oakland, OBD Police Chief Susan Manheimer, Sergeant Patrick Gonzalez, Officer Maxwell Diorso, Casey Bott, United States District Court, I'm sorry, District Court case, CB 0386, JCS City Attorney, file X 05141 for a total sum of $1,525,000 in no sense to be paid, to be paid to the following plaintiffs listed in this resolution and settle the plaintiff's claims for permanent injunctive relief pertaining to crowd control including multiple requirements regarding the use of chemical agents, multiple requirements for the management of multiple, I'm sorry, mutual aid agencies, requirements regarding the use of impact munitions displaying of identifying information, usage of personal digital recording devices and cloud dispersal methods, training of officers in a five-year period of continuing jurisdiction, and to settle the claims for attorney fees and costs in the amount up to $200,000 in no sense. I'm sorry, $1,200,000 in no sense arising from local police departments responding to demonstrations, May 29, 2020 and June 1, 2020. Item 2.25, a resolution celebrating Whitney Barizoto's extraordinary work shaping and leading the Public Ethics Commission and thanking her for 10 years of service. Item 2.26, a resolution urging Alameda County, the state and federal government to provide funding to develop, support a comprehensive and holistic response to the overdose and opioid epidemic in the city of Oakland. Item 2.27, a resolution affirmatively appointing of U. K. Lee to the Board of Port Commissioners. Item 2.28, resolution authorizing the city administrator to negotiate or execute a professional services agreement with Introwest Consulting Group in an amount not to exceed $1 million for on-call planning, permanent support services on an as-meeted basis for a period of 18 months with an option where the city administrator enters into a contract extension for an additional six months in an amount not to exceed $350,000 without returning to city council while waiving the city's local small business enterprise program requirements and appropriating $1,350,000 from the Development Services Fund balance to both the contract awarded to the Introwest Consulting Group and city administrator optional contract extension to provide on-call permanent support services on an as-meet basis and making appropriate sequel findings. Item 2.9, I'm sorry, 2.29 regarding fiscal year local measures MN Library QZDP, Parks Q and Measure AA has been withdrawn and rescheduled to July 19, 2021. I'm sorry, 22. Can't go back in time. Item 2.30, a resolution confirming the appointment of Jorge Alarma, Kim Johnson, Tiffany Lascato, Jennifer, I'm sorry, Jessica Johnson, Sophia Adams, Melissa Delther, Dortrina Johnson, Julissa Perez Lima, Dana Solano, Corinne Weaver, Karina Jagannathan, Edgar Rodriguez Ramirez, Melanie Moore, Lang Lontau, Bernadette Zermino, as members of the Children's Initiative Citizens Oversight Commission. Item 2.31, a resolution authorizing the following actions. Adopt the fiscal year 22 through 23 workforce development budget accepting and appropriating $5,896,000 of youth workforce development program funds from the offices of the Governor's California Volunteers to increase youth and young adult employment services and develop pathways into careers in public service accepting and appropriating $500,000 from the California Workforce Development Board authorizing grant agreements with service providers completely selected, I'm sorry, competitively selected by the Oakland Workforce Development Board to comprehensive career services, adult career services and youth career services from workforce innovation opportunity. Weowa Title I funds and other funds for fiscal year 22 to 23 authorizing the carryover of unspent fiscal year 21 through 22 funds to contracted service providers in fiscal year 22 through 23 and authorizing the city administrator to apply for, accept, apply for and accept grant and contributions for workforce development services beyond the Weowa Title I formula funding and other budgeted funding sources up to $250,000 per instance with the approval of the Oakland Workforce Development Board without returning accounts. Item 2.32 regarding the 12th Street Remain Parcell ENA with East Bay Asian Local Development Corporation has also been moved to the July 19th agenda. And I believe that concludes your presentation.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And at this time, I do want to call on Mitesh Bakta from the city attorney's office to read in a correction.
Thank you, President Bass. Madam City Clerk, if I have screen sharing ability, I will briefly show a minor typographical correction for the legislation attached to item 2.18. Okay, hopefully everyone is able to see this. This is on page 15 of the legislation. There is a minor correction from $21,100,000 to $20,900,000. And it is reflected here in red line. The clerk's office will be receiving a corrected copy. And that is the only change that needs to be reflected.
Could you actually read the ballot question, just so that we are?
Yes. Of course. So the change is occurring to the ballot question. Shall the measure amending Oakland's business tax rates to create a progressive rate structure that would, one, impose the highest rates on the highest grossing businesses? Two, increase Oakland's annual tax revenue by an estimated amount. The prior version stated $21,100,000, and now it is stating $20,900,000. And three, generate approximately $124 million in total annual revenue for municipal services by imposing business tax rates of between .05% to .55% of gross receipts and other rates as stated in the measure be adopted.
Thank you. So colleagues, with that correction, I do want to make sure that we are able, when there is a motion, to incorporate that correction into the motion. And at this point, I'll take comments and questions from the council.
Move approval as amended?
Second that.
Thank you. Councilmember Call.
Certainly supporting the consent calendar. I just wanted to thank Whitney Barizoto, Chair of the, I'm sorry, Executive Director of the Ethics Commission for 10 years for the tremendous work she's done. We have a resolution in our packet thanking her. I just want to acknowledge that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. I will share a comment that I have. I do want to thank Councilmember Tao for bringing forward item 2.26, which is the resolution in support of a comprehensive and holistic response to the overdose and opioid epidemic. Glad to be a co-sponsor. I just want to remind the council that back in 2019, we passed a resolution, which I brought forward, regarding overdose prevention programs. So we are on the record or have been on the record in the past in terms of supporting overdose prevention programs. And there is a bill that is currently making its way through the state legislature that could potentially allow Oakland to have such a program. So I do hope that we will be able to move forward and make progress on this issue. Councilmember Tao, you're next.
Thank you so much, Council President. Yes, I wanted to speak on item 2.26, the item that I and yourself for bringing it forward in regards to the comprehensive approach to the opioid epidemic. I think that this is, you know, this is not a new thing that's happening, but it's definitely more, becoming more prevalent in these, in many cities, including San Francisco here in Oakland. And I want to make sure that we are getting ahead of the numbers that we know may be coming down. And so I wanted to pass this resolutions and then have, start having those conversations with the county to see what they're currently doing and how we can work together regionally, more so, but also here in the city of Oakland. So I hope that my council colleagues will be able to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor?
Hey there, I'm supportive of the entire consent calendar. I just had one question related to item 2.13, the property bid annual report. It looks like $2.8 million are being assessed to the city in the downtown Oakland Community Benefit District. Is that? Is that correct or is that just what they're bringing in? Is that the city's assessment or is that?
To our staff, can you help clarify that question?
This is Eric Simunza from Economic and Workforce. So the question is whether this is?
The $2.8 million, is that the overall assessment from all stakeholders or is that the?
The two point eight million dollars, is that the overall assessment from all stakeholders or is that the city's contribution to it?
Two point eight million dollars, so the.
I believe it might be property value, but I'll let the staff answer.
Yeah, the, the amount that the city will be paying in total is three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars. The two point eight million, and there's an additional two thousand eight hundred and seventy-one that Orsa will be paying. The two point eight million, I'm trying to recall where that number is, but that is not the amount that the city will be paying. The city will be paying the three hundred, three hundred and eighty-nine and also will be paying that other amount.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. That's sufficient.
Okay.
Do we already have a motion in a second?
We do, I believe. And I believe we can go ahead and call the question. Madam Clerk?
On the consent calendar, they move by Councilmember, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Kaplan, seconded by Councilmember Gao. With the amendment to item two point eighteen, Councilmember Five? Aye. Councilmember Gao?
Aye.
Councilmember called?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kaplan?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Vote in town?
Aye.
President Bass?
Aye.
Consent calendar is approved as amended with a vote of eight ayes. Continuing to item three, which is your public hearing.
Thank you. We have one public hearing on this agenda. I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Madam President, before we move forward?
Yes.
I did not hear a public statement, and I apologize for not raising this, but I did not hear a public statement on the consent item that I requested at our Rules Committee meeting. For the city attorney to opine on the conflict of interest. For myself and the Anti-Policeman's Care Project and others. Regarding the case versus the city of Oakland. So I'm asking again to get that clarity on record.
Thank you. To the city attorney, Barbara Parker?
Yes, I'm happy to make the statement. We would not have allowed the vote to take place with Councilmember Five either in closed session or here. We had not determined that we had no evidence for conflict. But to summarize, based on information that was published online. And the deposition testimony of Turha Akh, who is co-founder of Community Ready Corps. Our office contacted the council member regarding a potential conflict of interest. And this happened before the June sixteenth closed session at which the council discussed and voted to authorize the settlement of that lawsuit. Which is noticed under consent item today, two point two four. Community Ready Corps is one of the plaintiffs in that lawsuit. Information that was published online suggested that Councilmember Five was or is married to Turha Akh. And that Councilmember Five was the founder and or CEO of Community Ready Corps. Turha Akh's testimony was that they were never married. That Councilmember Five is not a member of the Board of Community Ready Corps. And that the council member has ongoing involvement with Community Ready Corps as a volunteer. We spoke with Councilmember Five and she advised our office that she has no financial interest in Community Ready Corps. That her only role in the organization is as a volunteer. And that the council member and Turha Akh have never been married. Based on that information, we had orally advised that Councilmember Five did not have a financial conflict of interest with respect to participating in the discussion of and voting on the settlement of the reference lawsuit in closed session. And certainly those facts remain the same. That advice to this evening's vote.
Thank you, Attorney Parker. Thank you, Council President Bass, for that clarification.
All right, so our consent calendar is complete. At this time, I will take a motion to open the public hearing that we have on the agenda for the Consolidated Annual Action Plan.
We'll move.
I'll second that. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
The motion to open the public hearing move by Councilmember Gao, seconded by President Bass. Councilmember Five?
Aye.
Councilmember Gao?
Aye.
Councilmember called?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kaplan?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Vote in town?
Aye.
President Bass?
Aye.
Public hearing is open with a vote of eight ayes.
Thank you. First, let's hear the, the report from the staff of the Housing and Community Development Department.
Thank you so much and good evening to the council.
I apologize to interrupt. We did not read the item into record.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, okay, go ahead. Conduct the public hearing and upon conclusion. Adopt the following pieces of legislation, a resolution accepting and appropriating in a war for the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development Grant Funds in the amount of fourteen million, eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars for the Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnership, Emergency Solutions Grant and Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Program Fiscal Year twenty-two through twenty-three. And two, authorizing the city administrator to prepare and submit to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development Annual Action Plan for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Appropriating eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the revolving loan programs. Income in any amounts collected to exceed their for, their, uh, excuse me. For housing rehabilitation activities and other CDBCG, excuse me, eligible activities and projects. Authorizing the city administrator to negotiate and execute grant agreements for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. CDBG home ESG and HOPWA programs. Authorizing the city administrator to approve CDBG future funding recommendations to be submitted under twenty-two, twenty-three. CDBG request for proposal process without returning to council. And authorizing the user of general purpose funds to pay central service overhead charges for the Emergency Solutions Grant and Housing Opportunities for Persons with Programs. And two, the resolution authorizing the city administrator to prepare and submit to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. A third substantial amendment to the, substantial amendment to the city of Oakland's Annual Action Plan for fiscal year twenty-one through twenty-two. To update HOPWA allocation for HUD grant years twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty.
Thank you. And we can now hear the report from Greg Garrett.
Thank you again and good evening to the council chair, council members and to the public. I am Greg Garrett with the city's Housing and Community Development Department. And before you today, as just stated, are two pieces of legislation. One, approving the twenty-two, twenty-three Annual Action Plan for the recommended use of the CDBG home HOPWA and ESG grants. The second legislation being an update of HOPWA specific uses that is included in the substantial amendment to the twenty-one, twenty-two Annual Action Plan. This is specific uses of the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty HOPWA grants awarded to the city. In two thousand and nineteen, the city of Oakland updated its permitted access to housing or path framework addressing homelessness across the full spectrum of services from prevention and intervention to homeless solutions and housing. In May of twenty twenty-one, the city adopted the Housing and Community Development or HCD Strategic Action Plan, which aligns with the PATH framework, ending family homelessness for Oakland and preventing displacement. Creating houses, housing for extremely low-income residents. COVID-relieve housing services and creating homeownership opportunities, all with racial equity at the core of this work. HCD is based, the HCD strategic plan is based on three priorities. That being protection, preservation and production. Protection being homeless prevention and housing stability services. Preservation maintenance of current affordable housing inventory. And production of affordable housing provided through acquisition, conversion and new construction. In spring of twenty twenty-two, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development or HUD notified former grantees of CDBG home HOPWA and ESG funds that funds typically allocated around the month of February. For this year would not, with experience delay. Further instructing jurisdictions to not submit their annual action plans until HUD had finally made allocations officially announced on their website. On May thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, HUD did announce allocations allocating approximately seven point four million in CDBG funds to City Oakland for various community development activities. Approximately three point four million for home funds for affordable housing. Three point four million for HOPWA funds for services and housing for people with HIV and AIDS. And then six hundred and fifty-one thousand in ESG funds benefiting the city's homeless population for a total of fourteen point nine million. Today's public hearing is one of three citizen participation opportunities for the twenty-two, twenty-three Annual Action Plan. The second is the review of the Annual Action Plan that is quoted online as publicly noticed from June ninth, twenty twenty-two through July ninth, excuse me, July ninth, twenty twenty-two. A virtual community presentation regarding the Annual Action Plan was made on June thirtieth. And public comments from the three public participation opportunities will be made part of the final Annual Action Plan to be submitted to HUD later this month. Per HUD requirement, the Annual Action Plan is due to HUD sixty days after the official HUD funding announcement made on May thirteenth. That would make the Annual Action Plan due to HUD on July twelfth, twenty twenty-two. All recommended actions included in the Annual Action Plan are in alignment with the city council adopted Strategic Action Plan. The five-year consolidated plan as well as the PATH framework. Plan activities include new instruction acquisition and rehabilitation of a hundred and sixty-nine, I'm sorry, a hundred and ninety-six affordable housing units, seventy-three of which to benefit households with extremely low incomes. This is under home program. Under CDBG, a range of services will benefit over fifty-seven hundred Oakland residents and businesses through homeless services, fair housing, economic opportunities, seismic retrofit of multi-unit rental housing and other community development activities as well. Staff further recommends utilizing one point five seven million in CDBG funds typically set aside for the community development district board allocations to support the acquisition of property for affordable housing and provision of legal assistance for homeless prevention or housing stability services as one-time resources for such services are soon to expire. For the HOPWA program, the city is awarded as an eligible metropolitan strategic area including Alameda County and Contra Costa County. Two point three million will be distributed through a request for proposals process for projects in Alameda County. And the one point two million will be allocated through Contra Costa County's request for proposal process. Both for HIV AIDS services, housing, short-term rental mortgage, utility assistance and information and referral. For ESG, funds will be used to support shelter operations for homeless families, veterans, persons with HIV AIDS, seniors and persons with substance abuse or formerly incarcerated and other homeless populations. All recommendations in the twenty-two, twenty-three Annual Action Plan are in alignment with the strategic plans put in place and approved by city council prior. Lastly, per HUD instruction, the third substantial amendment to the twenty-one, twenty-two Annual Action Plan updates the uses of twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty HOPWA funds. Updated uses per, by both counties are provided online to include the provision of the services just mentioned above. Again, the Annual Action Plan is due to HUD on July twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Upon city council approval, this plan will be submitted to HUD for final five days. Upon HUD review, HUD will execute CDBG. The grant agreements with the city of Oakland, allowing the city to carry out planned activities as outlined in the Annual Action Plan. And this concludes my presentation and I am available for questions and or comments.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. And we will take public comments on this hearing item. But first we'll go to the council for any clarifying questions. Councilmember Five?
Yes, thank you, Chair Bass. So through the chair to Mr. Garrett. Can you just clarify for me the one million, the approximately one million that's being recommended to support acquisition? How will those funds in alternative one be facilitated? Like what is the acquisition plan for those? And then the balance to fund homeless prevention and housing stability? How will those funds be used? Because the total of those two amounts, it looks like in alternative two would go to set aside for each council district. So I want to understand, just weighing out those, the two. How the, how the funds in alternative one?
And through the chair, I'm not sure if it's my internet that's going bad or someone else's. But I will attempt to answer that question. I believe I've received the full question. The one point five seven will be used for, to support affordable housing acquisitions for such properties such as the Lake Merritt Lodge. And or other properties that the city is looking for to increase affordable housing opportunities in the city of Oakland. The other portion of the one point five seven million will be used to support legal services that will prevent Oakland renters from becoming homeless or experiencing displacement. As we are coming to a place where we're running out of fund sources that we received for that purpose. And so we, we realized through the mid-cycle budget, we received or we're receiving one point seven million. And this will be with those funds to provide the services that we deem necessary for Oaklanders.
Thank you for that. My question was, what programs will these funds go to? Will this be another allocation for a local nonprofit, for several nonprofits? Who will facilitate the, the use of these funds? Like you said, Lake Merritt Lodge, like Lake Merritt Lodge or other places, I assume. So I want to know specifically, are there proposals for how these funds would be utilized? Because I'm trying to weigh out whether I would support alternative one or two. But I, I need to be clearer on how they'll be allocated and to whom they'll be allocated to.
Absolutely. And through the chair, as far as the services are concerned. It is our plan to utilize existing service providers that are funded currently under the city's Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Who know the population, who has worked for the population to continue to provide homeless prevention and anti-displacement services. And then as far as the affordable housing projects, we are looking to see where the funds will be best used. And we, I use Lake Merritt Lodge as an example.
And Director Lotway's hand is up. So Director, why don't you also chime in here?
Thank you so much. Good afternoon or good evening. Shola Lotway, Director of HCD. Actually, President Bass, I wondered if we might promote Emily Weinstein, who is our Deputy Director of Community Development, who's been working very closely with Mr. Garrett on this work as well. And can provide some additional context for the council member and other. for the council member and others as we go through the questions and comments. Yes, thank you so much.
They are now promoted.
Great, thank you. My name is Emily Weinstein, Deputy Director of Community Development for HCD. Thank you so much to the chair, to the council members. Through the chair to Councilmember Fife, to answer your question, the 1.5 million dollars, as Greg mentioned, will have two components. The 500,000 would be dedicated to services, homeless prevention, and housing stability services, and we'd be issuing an RFP for those services. Those would be combined with the other resources that we are hoping will be approved through the mid-cycle budget for homeless prevention services, and so would be allocated, kind of pooled together with those other resources towards tenant protections and other homeless prevention services. As Greg mentioned, the partners that have come together around the ERAP funding are a very strong network of partners, and so we imagine through the RFP that many of those same partners will respond to the RFP. In terms of the 1 million dollars at this time, it's not dedicated to a specific project. Greg did mention the Lake Merritt Lodge, since we know that is a project that is of interest to the council and also in the process of assembling the different funding possibilities. But at this point, it's just a kind of a million dollars to have, to use as best as we can towards an acquisition of a project that will help relieve some of the homeless population.
Okay, Councilmember Fife, are you complete?
So I just want to be clear, almost so it looks like the million for the acquisition wouldn't necessarily be the Lake Merritt Lodge, it would be a decision that's made by HCD and perhaps the City Administrator's Office to find out, to determine the best use of those funds for an acquisition project?
Yes, that's what we're recommending at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gao?
Yes, Madam Chair, first, I make a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Okay, we will entertain the motion once we hear from members of the public during this hearing, so why don't we go ahead, Madam Clerk, and invite members of the public to speak? They will have up to two minutes. And for members of the public, again, this is speaking on the public hearing regarding our consolidated action plan.
Thank you for that, President Bass, and as stated by the show, you'll be given two minutes. I have Nick P., Ms. Asad Olavala, and B. Beakman. Nick, you are allowed to unmute yourself when you may be near two minutes. Once you've unmuted yourself.
I'm sorry, I thought I was going to speak on another topic, so I will pass.
Thank you for that. Moving to the next speaker in the queue. That is, excuse me, Ms. Olavala, you have been allowed to unmute yourself when you may be near two minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Clerk, I'm sorry. I want to reference the document that reports out the predictions for the program for 2022, 2023 by race and ethnicity. This report out represents how all data should be reported by race and ethnicity, because it breaks down the races, and then it says 13% of all races having Hispanic ethnicity. It separates race and ethnicity. That's the way you should report out data by race and ethnicity. The problem, though, is for the 2020, 2021, 6,746 residents and businesses who receive services, you don't give a race and ethnicity breakdown of how those services were distributed. I wish that would have happened. There is, the way this is done, there should be no reason why we don't have the plumbing situation sold at Lake Merritt and at Third and Parole to with all of this money. Because the money for community development blocks clearly allows you to use that money for homelessness assistance. Emergency Solution Grant allows you to help with the operation and provide assistance and services related to homelessness. It also allows you for the screening, training, referral, and placement of applicants who are homeless for employment. And with all of this money, why do we not have hot meals that are supposed to be given to those individuals at Lake Merritt tiny homes, and why we don't have the plumbing in place for those showers?
I do apologize, Ms. Olavala, your two minutes are up. The next speaker, B. Beakman, you are allowed to unmute and begin.
Hi, Larry Beakman here. Thanks a lot for this item. I'd like to offer my just shallow two cents. I really try to offer a good public comment, but gosh darn it, I'm just so one-dimensional and shallow. I wish I wasn't, but to offer my public comment, it's my feeling for this sort of item that we, in this new era of COVID, we have just been given money that from the state and federal level, the subsidy programs that are developing in this era of COVID have been pretty amazing and impressive. And they have been a lot with the specific intent to really, really address homeless and unhoused issues that we know how to do, and we've been practicing for years, but we simply haven't been given the money to do it. And now we have the money. And so it's really a matter of how to really get our act together. In San Jose, you know, I'm based in San Jose, so thank, sorry for, and thank you for my references to San Jose. They have a plan to really address housing families, almost all families by 2025. That can be with this sort of subsidy planning we have at this time. You know, how can subsidies, you know, really work to house people who need it? Because in the past, we put them into housing unhoused people, they'd be there for a month or two, and it wasn't out of any fault of theirs or laziness, it's just hard to afford continual housing, and they need the subsidy help. So we're planning these efforts now. Good luck how you really can work on this thing now, and really get it together, and not be afraid that as community and the public and politicians, we can talk about the process of subsidy openly with each other. Thank you.
Thank you for our comments, and that was the last speaker of a comment.
Thank you. Okay, so Councilmember Gao, if you don't mind restating your motion, I believe that was to close the public hearing and to accept or to adopt the resolution as recommended by staff, is that correct?
Yes, yes, thank you, yes.
Okay, and that would include alternative 1, which is the staff recommendation?
Yes, thank you.
Vice Mayor Kaplan?
Yes, just following up on the prior comments from my colleagues, you know, we have been pushing hard for significant new investments that would actually help get people off the streets. And, you know, we've seen successes with things like the Lake Merritt Lodge. We've seen the need for things like plumbing and some of the interventions. And each time we've been pushing for these things, we've been told that there's no money. And here we have money, and we're being told we have no idea what it will be used for. And so I'm concerned about that, that we aren't having a commitment to matching available funds to these urgent and identified needs. And so, you know, I would feel more comfortable if there would be a council approval of where the money is actually going. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me call on Administrator Riskin, then we'll go back to the council members. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to clarify, you know, we have heard repeatedly from the council, including, I think the Vice Mayor has been one of the leading voices on this, that we should be pursuing acquisition opportunities. So the staff recommendation here is to provide some funding that would allow us to be opportunistic if and when such opportunities arise, such that we could leverage this million dollars. You know, a million alone is not going to do much, but may help leverage an opportunity. Should we ultimately identify such opportunity, any sort of acquisition would have to come back and be approved by council. So I did want to clarify that. I think the earlier question was, would this be a determination made by HCD and the administration? And we would certainly be identifying the opportunity, but ultimately, the approval of the expenditure of those funds would have to come back to council unless it was something you've already approved. And then the other 500,000 dollars is for exactly for expansion of exactly the kind of services that you supported, both in the mayor's proposed mid-cycle budget as well as your own augmentation of it in terms of support services. This is what we're proposing would be, we think the best use of this 1.578 million dollars. If the council chooses to otherwise, we gave you different options. The way the resolution is written, it doesn't specify this breakdown of the 1.57, so if the council would rather a different breakdown of that, that's certainly, you know, that's certainly your call. But this is our proposal, and put it forward in the spirit of following past council direction.
Thank you. So just to be clear, the specific sites to be acquired would in fact come back to council?
Yeah, we don't have independent authority to acquire property or buildings, so anything that we would be recommending for the use of these funds, unless it was contributing to something that was already approved, would have to come back to council.
And in terms of the portion that would be for the interventions and things like the plumbing, what would be the approval process for that component?
So that is not what we're currently recommending the use of these funds for. That is something that I would ask HCD to advise as to whether these, those would be eligible uses for these funds. What we are proposing is the 509, little under 510,000 dollars would go to augment the million dollars that was in our proposed mid-cycle adjustment, and then the additional, I think you added, I don't remember if it was 750 or a million dollars in the end last Thursday, for tenant support services, legal services, financial services, et cetera. And that would be done through a competitive process.
Thank you.
Okay, Director Olatwe, do you want to speak first before we hear from the other council members?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, Administrator Riskin said exactly what I was going to say, so thank you.
Okay. Next is Councilmember Fife?
Yes, thank you, President Bass. I guess through the chair to Director Riskin, I would like to have either more clarity on the suggestions for the, well, I'll just say that there was confusion around the mid-cycle budget process because there were allocations that were being suggested to homeless services and legal services. Well, specifically, legal services for people facing eviction, but the issue was that a lot of our tenants' support groups were saying that there should be a differentiation between keep Oakland housed and Oakland housing secure. And so there was some confusion around that. So I want to be clear about where this 509, little under 510, would go in terms of that organization, and you're saying it would go through a competitive process. But the reality is, is we hear oftentimes with some of our public speakers, is that these RFPs go to the people who know how to engage the city process. They know how to, they know who to talk to, they know how to get in the queue, and so it's not terribly competitive because it's the same organizations over and over again. So that's why the process is challenging for me, because it really keeps a lot of money in the hands of just a small few, and I think that's a problem. So I would just need to either have more, I would, I think that I would be better, I would feel better about it if alternative 2 was the approach unless there was more clarity around equity and expanding the pool of individuals or organizations who offer these services.
Thank you, Councilmember Fife. I know there's other hands in the queue. I will maybe jump in here to build off of what you are sharing. In terms of the staff recommendation, alternative 1, I I am potentially supportive of the 1 million plus for acquisition, the 509,000 dollars, rather than going through a competitive process because there is so much need. I would be interested in having that support Oakland Housing Secure. I think a number of those organizations in that coalition are working effectively with tenants who are potentially at risk of becoming homeless. And we could potentially make a motion or make a motion to direct the balance of the funding, the 509,000, towards that organization so there is more clarity, and it does hit the streets sooner.
I would second that, Council President Bass, if you made that motion.
Okay, so there isn't a second yet to Councilmember Gao's motion, and so my motion would be to adopt the staff, the resolutions recommended by staff with the addition that the 509, 635,000 be directed to Oakland Housing Secure.
I'll second that again.
Thank you. Let's go to Councilmember Taylor.
Yeah, I just like to just Sorry about that. Can you guys hear me? Okay. Okay. So I think I understand the motion that's on the floor. I want to, I would like to hear from HCD staff. It sounds like we are directing it towards one specific provider through a grant allocation. Is that what the recommendation is? It's a direct allocation versus an RFE? I'm just trying to make sure I understand.
Sure.
Going on top of staff's recommendation.
So rather than the 509, 635 being allocated through a competitive process, it would have that amount be allocated to a collaborative called Oakland Housing Secure, which is currently working to prevent tenant displacement and to provide legal services.
So for my benefit and those of maybe the public who's watching, is there a, I guess maybe a little bit more information on the organization or collaborative?
Through the chair, if I may, to answer the question. Again, this is Shola Olatwe, and just to be clear, I'm understanding that the recommendation, the motion on the floor is for these funds to not go through a competitive process and to simply be granted to the, I believe, the four partners who are currently contracted as part of Oakland Housing Secure. Is that correct, Madam President? Correct. Okay, so to Councilmember Taylor, Oakland Housing Secure is was an effort, frankly, to get some additional resources to support the very important work of eviction prevention and some small emergency one-time grants to people, residents who were experiencing housing instability. There was also a very small amount of funds that went to support homeowners who were also experiencing some type of mortgage or financial crisis. That had been the primary city-funded efforts around, let's call it, rental support and emergency rental assistance pre-federal COVID relief fund. Then, when the COVID relief funds sort of flooded into the city, we both augmented that Oakland Housing Secure, Keep Oakland Housed network, and honestly, they are, many are one of the same. Some of the same partners are part of both of those efforts. And we augmented it to include more community groups, more in more neighborhoods, so as such that there are seven partners who are now providing that important So as such that there are seven partners who are now providing that important federal emergency rental relief as well as the ongoing, call it, housing stabilization supports to families. We recognized, our partners recognized that when federal money went away, we really did not have a source of funds to support those activities going forward. We came to you with a proposal to sort of squirrel away or allocate five of the money that is in front of you today. The administration and mayor put forth a million dollars and then this body put forth, I believe it was 750,000 dollars. In total, our thought was those resources would go to, would be competitively bid out to support legal and legal support and tenant and eviction prevention along with that housing stabilization supports. That was the, that was the plan and expectation for these resources. So happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. And I will just add, you know, having worked in the nonprofit sector, it does take a lot to compete, apply for these type of opportunities. And I know I would like to stretch our dollars more and have our organizations who assist tenants and property owners to stretch their time more by perhaps not going through that extensive process when they're already partnering with the city. So that's part of the intent behind my motion. Okay, let's hear from Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. Through the chair to Director Olatwe. Can you share with the public how the proposed 500-plus thousand dollars would be shared through the partnering organizations? What does that look like with allocation from the city into the seven organizations? With how they tap into and secure those funds to help the tenants and the homeowners?
Thank you for your question. And through the chair, to Councilmember Reed. Again, the proposal, the staff proposal that was in front of you was that those resources would be pooled into the sort of now larger fund that would be competitively bid out. We would expect that there would be at least 30 to 40% of that, those funds, you know, set aside for program and administration and the important tenant prevention, tenant and legal supports that those organizations would be providing to residents. And then the balance be provided in small one-time emergency grants. This is, you know, first and last month rent, sometimes assistance in paying an overdue utility bill, et cetera. We had not, and it is not before you today, kind of the dollar breakdown, but that really was, that's the intent was resources to support the important legal services work and then resources for those small one-time emergency grants. And that really sort of came from the important feedback that we received from our tenant, our community partners as to what worked for them in the administration of these types of grants.
Thank you. Is there a report that is available that shows where we've distributed that money in times past to each of those partnering organizations? Just, I'm just curious to see where that allocation has gone in the past. Grateful for the support of these organizations and I'm just curious now as we're looking to potentially allocate this money to see just how it's distributed amongst the seven organizations and their support out into the community.
Thank you. Through the chair to Councilmember, I just want to be very clear about what we're talking about, right? Oakland Housing Secure was the pre-COVID tenant assistance, emergency rental assistance that the city provided. And yes, we can provide that information to you, Councilmember Reed. Your question about the seven partners that are now part of the federally funded Keep Oakland Housed Emergency Rental Assistance Program, yes, there are, there's a monthly deck that is updated. I believe we shared that with your staff. I'm happy to share that with you again in terms of not only how an end-of-body approved their grants, but also the performance of each of those organizations who we've served, the average amount of money that has been put out, where those dollars have been incented. So happy to share that with you.
Okay, let's keep going here. Councilmember Gao.
Yes, to the Administrator, Mr. Olatwe. So what you're saying is the group that is being recommended, you highly recommend and you have an ongoing evaluation of the performance and meeting the needs of the public.
Thank you for your question. Through the chair, there is a report, there is a grant report for Oakland Housing Secure which predated the federal coronavirus emergency rental relief program, which is the seven partners that has since been referenced, which is not actually up for sort of debate or up for, is not in front of you as for action today. There is a report as well, a monthly report that we produce on how we are serving and distributing the federal funds that those seven partners are responsible for getting out into the community. We'd be happy to provide that as well.
So I think there's a recommendation to already direct that resources to an organization without having to go out to bid. I mean, that's what I heard that we were going to put it out to bid. And some of my colleagues have said, well, why go out to bid when we're gonna, we have this body in place to just give the money to them?
Okay, we've got a lot of hands up. There is a motion and second on the floor, so I do want to keep us moving. We still have a lot of items here.
So can you clarify your motion though? Are you saying give directly the money without going out to bid?
Yes, that's correct. And let me call on the city attorney here to see if they have something to add. Go ahead, Sosa Ortiz.
Yes, we wanted for the clarification because it sounds like the Councilmember Fife's motion would not be within the scope of the notice of this item. And so we don't see that in the sixth part of the, of the resolution that's before you. So we're questioning that it's really been properly noticed.
Okay, so there was an alternative one and an alternative two. And so it's not possible to modify the alternative one to have a portion of that go directly to a group that we are already partnering with. Is that correct, Mr. Ortiz?
It would appear so because it's not really within the scope that has was noticed.
Okay. Let's just do a round to hear everyone's comments and then I do want to try to close this out so we can keep our agenda moving. Let me see what order you all are in. Councilmember Taylor and then Greg Garrett and then Councilmember Kalb and then Administrator Riskin.
Yeah, I was still wanting to make sure that I understood which organizations we're talking about. So I looked up Housing Secure, Oakland Housing Secure, and see seven partnering organizations, but that's not the ones we're talking about. So what, I guess I just wanted to know the list of the organizations that we're talking about. And the collaborative that we are proposing to go to, which we'll be able to actually directly allocate to anyway, based on notice.
Okay. Through the chair, is that a question you'd like me to answer?
You can go ahead and answer that. Go ahead. Yes.
Through the chair, to the council member. We're not proposing recommending, just to be clear, the staff recommendation is not a direct allocation to any existing groups. We proposed to allocate these funds for a particular use and that we would then actually have a competitive process this summer. There are several organizations, some who participated in Oakland Housing Secure, some who are part of our more expanded federally funded emergency rental assistance program for whom I'm sure they would apply if the RFP was submitted because they've been doing this work. So I just, I, if you were to ask me right now, which organizations am I recommending funding to go to? I don't think we would, we can say that for sure. But we believe that these dollars should be used for legal supports and housing stabilizations for families because the federal dollars are effectively exhausted.
Thank you. And then just to kind of close out my comments, it seems to me like we should move forward within what's noticed. And I'm not quite sure. It seems as though we're limited in what we can choose. And option one seems to be the path that we are headed down. So just throwing that out there, I'm not sure who's going to make an alternate motion that is legally allowable.
Yes, I am noting that. Let's keep going through our queue. We have Greg Garrett next.
Thank you. Through the chair, I just wanted to bring up that procurement for over 500,000 dollars would require a competitive process. But we couldn't just allocate to an agency. We would definitely have to go through a competitive process in order to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. And that is due to the federal restrictions. Is that correct?
Yes, federal restrictions for CBGT.
Okay. All right. Well, given that, I will withdraw my, my motion. And let's keep going through the queue here. Councilmember Kalb.
No, I was, I was going to ask that very question to the staff about the federal requirements, but it sounds like that's settled. So I think we should just move forward with the staff recommendations, my suggestion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, so we are back to a motion with the staff recommendation and that is alternative one.
I'll second the motion on the table.
Okay, so we're back to Councilmember Gao's motion with a second from Councilmember Kalb. Okay. Seeing no other hands up, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
The motion moved by Councilmember Gao, seconded by Councilmember Kalb to approve the staff recommendation. Councilmember Fife?
No.
Councilmember Gao?
Aye.
Councilmember Kalb?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kaplan?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Bo-Ten Tao?
Bo-Ten Tao?
Aye.
President Bass?
Aye.
Motion passes with a vote of seven ayes, one no. Fight. I'm sorry, was that motion to also to close the public hearing?
It was originally, yes.
Thank you. Going to item four, which is not used because the minutes were approved at the last meeting. Going to item five, or report of final decisions made during closed session and disclosure of non-confidential closed session discussions.
Okay, let's hear from the city attorney's office, Amadeus Otello.
Evening to the chair. This is Amadeus Otello with the city attorney's office. And there were no final decisions or discussions to be brought out.
Thank you. Okay, we now have three non-consent items that are not ballot related. And then we also, well, we have a number of items that are not ballot related and then we get to our ballots. And if I may, Vice Mayor Kaplan, are you willing to chair just for a little bit to give me a break through the next few items?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Just to confirm in terms of any changes as we transition, we just finished three. So was there any other items being moved or changed? I see we have a great deal of items remaining and there's been some discussion about some of them being put over, so.
Right, so we are now on item six. Then we go to item seven. Number eight has been withdrawn to the meeting on the 19th. And then number nine, and then on to our ballot-related items.
Alrighty. Yes, absolutely. Thank you for your fabulous chairing, Madam President.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, is item eight to the 11th or the 19th?
Oh, I'm sorry. I misspoke.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, I misspoke, sorry.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair or Madam Clerk, are we at a time where we need to extend, a vote to extend the meeting? I'm not sure.
We sure do.
Yeah, we're going past it.
We sure do. So yes, Mr. Kalb, were you wishing to make such a motion?
Actually, the printed agenda says midnight. So.
Through the chair, that's old stock. Like, is your old?
Okay.
It's thirty-six hours.
I'll move, I'll move we extend the meeting for our rules.
Is there a second? Okay, we have a motion, a second to extend the meeting. Please call the roll.
The motion to extend moved by Councilmember Kalb, seconded by President Bass. Councilmember Fife?
Aye.
Councilmember Gao?
Aye.
Councilmember Kalb?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Vice Mayor Kaplan?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Bo-Ten Tao?
Aye.
President Bass?
Aye.
Motion to extend is approved with a vote of eight ayes.
Thank you very much. And now, Madam Clerk, let me go to item six.
Item six, a resolution awarding a construction contract to Pacific Trenchless, the lowest responsive or responsible bidder in accordance with project plans and specifications for the sanitary sewer sub-basement 83-403, rehabilitation with contractors bid, quarter-mile-nots-fee $5,436,460, and adult-adapting appropriate seater finding.
Thank you very much. Let us start with the staff report, please.
Madam Chair, are you requesting a brief staff report?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Kalb. Did you wish to make a motion?
No, just a brief staff report.
Yes, to staff, a brief staff report, please. Let's do, let's put two minutes on the clock just to help encourage the brevity. Thank you. Please proceed.
Go ahead, Brandon.
Yes. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and members of the public. My name is Brandon from Public Works and the project is 100, 2001, and the first year we have a patient project in part of the previous, and the first year we have a patient testing program. And this project features, first the four miles, and the first year of pipe lines, and especially the maintenance of rehabilitation and a full lateral connection. And this project was advertised in April, it paid for the speed in the middle of March. And the price analysis was created in early April. And those bits are used in science. And we obtained, public works will be approved, the base of the council directly. And then we provided a briefing to Councilmember Fife and to Councilmember Tao of 20 seconds. And upon approval, the project will be constructed on the from September to 2000 February next year. So after the command, the resolution awarding the construction contract to a particular title which is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder in accordance with the project. And there's a total of $1,436,460, and a box in appropriate California environment of quality. That's the report and I'm ready for any questions.
Thank you very much and good job staying within the allotted time and thank you for the report. First up is Councilmember Gao.
Yes, I make a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second, seeing no other hands in the. Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second, seeing no other hands in the queue. Uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you.
Welcome on item six, moved by Councilmember Gao, seconded by Councilmember Taylor, to approve the staff recommendation. Councilmember Fife? Councilmember Fife? Councilmember Gao?
Aye.
Councilmember called?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kaplan?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Quoten Tao?
Aye.
President Bass?
Aye.
Item six is approved with a vote of seven ayes, one absent, five. Item seven, an information report from the city administrator on all youth employment programs within the city of Oakland, including the total number of positions or placements for the current year, funding sources, as well as plans and efforts to expand the number of youth part, youth participants, for the clarify the application process for young people, creation of employment opportunities within the city departments, and securing private funds to support the growth of youth employment in our city.
Thank you so much for this. Uh, this was an item, uh, that I requested together with Councilmember Fife as part of an effort to strengthen our youth employment programs. Uh, we do know that providing, uh, jobs and economic opportunity and just positive opportunities of where to spend their time for our young people has many long-term benefits, not only for their own lives, uh, but also for the surrounding community as well. And this is something, um, that has gone up and down over the years in Oakland. Uh, but I think it's very important to continue the work to strengthen our, our programs, uh, for jobs for our young people. And so we'll have the, uh, administration is invited to give the report.
Good evening. This is Sophia Navarro, Executive Director of the Oakland Workforce Development Board. So I know that in the interest of time, I do want to be mindful. I did have a short presentation prepared, but at this point, um, I'm open to just answering questions on the report that was provided with the, um, with the follow-ups that City Council, um, had requested. So, uh, I can jump into the report if you'd like me to, but I also know that we're pressed on time.
Uh, thank you for that. So you, you do have a PowerPoint?
Yes, I have a quick PowerPoint, if you'd like me to just share my screen.
Can, can, could you do it in two minutes?
Um, yes, I could skip through it if you'd like. I can definitely do that.
Well, or if it's more helpful to people, we could ask to have the PowerPoint uploaded as an infomemo so that people could read it on the public website, uh, more leisurely. Mr. Administrator, can you arrange to have the PowerPoint uploaded as a public infomemo on the website?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay, why don't we do that? And then you can give us sort of the brief, uh, update in terms of where we're at with our numbers, uh, and the efforts to expand the, the program and ease the, the application process.
Okay, great. I can definitely do that. Thank you, Councilmember, Vice Mayor, sorry. Um, so real quickly, where we're at with numbers, um, one of the things that we shared in the report is, uh, really an overview of the citywide efforts taking place. And so what we shared was, um, the different departments that are conducting summer programming, which gets us to, um, at least about one thousand eight hundred, uh, youth employment opportunities for individuals, for young people. So those departments are, um, OPW, it's also DVP, OFCY, and then through our efforts through OWDB, for Californians for All Youth Workforce Grant, which we're calling Oakland Forward. In addition to our WEOWA Youth, uh, we're able to reach, uh, that one thousand, about one thousand eight hundred number. And so again, that's citywide through different departments. Um, and then our efforts through OWDB collectively are roughly about serving about a little over five hundred young people. So again, um, our efforts and our intention is that moving forward for the upcoming years, we are looking at ensuring that we are collaborating our, our efforts with citywide departments so that come next year, we are better coordinated and are able to make sure that we're getting ahead of this, um, so that young people have the opportunity to have employment in the summer and year round. So, um, the other third piece that I just wanted to share is that through the revenue sources, which was one of the questions that was asked collectively through, as I mentioned, we received a state funding from Californians for All Youth Workforce Grant, um, those of the five point nine million that we received, three point four million is going towards the summer and year-round efforts. Uh, out of WEOWA Youth, about two point four million is going for private fundraising, which staff have, um, worked with, uh, to try to get fundraising for summer employment, about a hundred thousand came in for that. Measure HH Sugar Sweetened Beverage Tax, about four hundred thousand, and then in collaboration with OFCY, five hundred and twenty-five thousand. So I, and OWDB for these efforts are about six point nine million. And then, uh, to touch on the efforts to expand, so we are again collaborating and working closely with other citywide departments in addition to our current providers to make sure that we are getting the word out about these opportunities. Um, just to give you a quick, brief overview of where we're at right now with our efforts. So recruitment is currently underway. Over five hundred youth have submitted applications, uh, summer orientations have begun, job ready, job readiness training has started, and over a hundred employers have submitted orders thus far. Um, and that just continues to grow, grow overall. Um, I'm also happy to just share that what we've done, um, I know one of the questions was around the application. So given where we're at at this point, um, providers have already been actively doing outreach. And so for next year, we are planning to look into a coordinated application that we just submitted that and it goes to providers. But for now, the best approach was to direct young people to the organizations that are providing the service because every organization has a slightly different onboarding process, an orientation process. So we felt it was best to connect them directly to individuals at organizations that are providing these services. And our efforts continue to, um, our, sorry, our efforts are continuing to ensure that we're getting, you know, more fundraising going for, um, the summer and year-round efforts. So I'll leave it at that and answer any additional questions, but I know I kind of just ran through that real quickly.
And no, thank you so much for that. And, and as I know, you know, you joined us fairly recently. So as we look ahead, uh, to the future, I hope we'll continue to look to expand, um, in-house opportunities, opportunities in parks and rec, and improving our public spaces, and also just, you know, to, if you could review, you know, ahead of the coming year, the history in terms of how it was that the, a prior mayoral administration, uh, was able to successfully do much more fundraising than we've seen in recent years. And so I think that's an area that, that warrants looking into so that we can re-strengthen, uh, the, the fundraising and the, the partnerships to, to expand the number of jobs, a- as well as you've already mentioned, obviously, the work on, on making the application process, um, more seamless, uh, for the young people, that that's something that you're looking at already. So thank you for that. Uh, to my colleagues, um, this is not an action item today. This is an informational report. I'll just check if there's any other questions, uh, from my colleagues. Councilmember Fife?
Yes, through the chair, Ms. Navarro, where do individuals, young people go to find, um, this application? Uh, I know you said next year there'll be a coordinated application, but where do people go for an application now and for the year-round jobs that are, that will be made available through this process?
Right, so before the summer, um, individuals can go to www.oakland.ca.gov/wdb. If they go to that, they will, um, find our youth summer programming. And there, what we, we don't have an actual application on our website. We have the listing of the providers with the, the contact person and their information, their email and their phone number for them to contact so that they can, um, directly connect with the organization. So we do not have the application online. Again, just because every, everyone's application is a little bit different. Um, but what we are looking to do, and then I've, as a result of today's city council meeting and approval of the year-round efforts and the contracts, we are going to update our website to ensure that we have the listing of all the providers that are being awarded for the funding. And so that information will be online as well.
Okay. And I, I purchased a, a website to make it easier. So I purchased a domain that says Oakland Youth Jobs. I think we should probably utilize something that makes more sense and is more, um, I, it just, it, it's more in alignment with what we're trying to propose for young people. But we can have more of a conversation about that offline.
Absolutely, for sure. Thank you, Councilmember.
So thank you so much for doing that. And I, I would ask if staff can please follow up on that because, uh, people say they are having great difficulty finding and accessing applications. And, and the notion that an applicant should have to track down separate processes and separate contacts through multiple places is going to be a barrier to entry, uh, for many of the people, you know, who we most need to be reaching a- and aren't. So I, I'm looking forward to that getting remedied going forward. Um, thank you. And thank you, Councilmember Fife, for doing that. Um, next up is Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms., uh, Navarro, through the chair, for this, um, highlight and the work that you've provided. We're excited to have you on the team. I know that one of the challenges that, uh, we've discussed with the department is the need for staff. And so I wanted to just, uh, through the chair, um, confirm the number of staff vacancies outside of, uh, the position I know that we proposed through our office in the mid-cycle for, uh, program analysts that we understood would fund a temporary program analyst in your department to support just expanded program design for these youth workforce services, including marketing and outreach to engage and recruit more youth to our city employment programs. That is one position that I'm aware of. But can you share more, as your report alluded to, staff, uh, vacancies and the support that's needed to dedicate the management and design of programs to engage more youth? That's one question.
Through the chair, to Councilmember Reed, thank you for the question. So when I came on board February twenty twenty-two, there were staff of three, and that included myself. Um, so since then, um, we have added an additional staff person to our team. So we're a team of three, and then we, uh, have the assistance of an administrative assistant. So technically a team of four, or sorry, five now. So administrative assistant, a program analyst, and two program analysts, three, and myself. And then the vacancies right now, we have two program analysts, two position that are vacant, and an additional P three position, program analyst three position, that is dedicated to this state funding that I mentioned, um, that we're calling Oakland Forward. So that position will be essential in, you know, designing. Right now, we're, we're covering all pieces and everyone's stepping up. So I'm greatly appreciative of the staff draw that we've been able to accomplish in the last four months with our small team. So that, that's currently the status of our vacancies.
Thank you. I'll continue to advocate for that position that we lifted up. And through the chair, if you could, um, Mr. Navarro, share, I see the number of positions that we fill for placement. Are those the total budgeted versus field? Are those field based on how much funding we've been able to secure? I know we've talked about wanting to ensure at least a hundred more youth, uh, jobs, and I'm not sure if the funding has to come in for that, or if this funding just represents the money that we've had to allocate towards those positions.
Yeah, so that number of one thousand eight hundred actually represents the efforts of different city departments. So DVP has its own allocation for its own programs. Um, Oakland Public Works, and they have their team, Oakland Initiative, right? So every department has their own allocation for funding that lead towards this one thousand eight, a little over one thousand eight hundred numbers. For OWDB, the Oakland Workforce Development Board, um, we have a little bit more control of those positions because that's what we manage mostly. Um, and we collaborate with the different departments on what their efforts are. But again, separate funding sources from, from our division. So with our funding sources, we're a little over five hundred, um, young people being served through WEOWA Youth dollars, the Oakland Forward funding, and, um, the OFCY, uh, and Oakland Workforce Development Board funding that, um, was just approved last, last council meeting. That makes sense.
Thank you. And through the chair, just a last question. I know in our equity analysis, we state the target zip codes, uh, that we'd like to, uh, get more participation of youth. Do we have a report that states for the positions that have been fielded, those zip codes that have been served with our youth? Is that available at a later date? Or is that available somewhere to access now?
Uh, that could be available at a later date. We did make sure that during our RFP proposals, that we did call out those were our priority population areas and, um, locations. So we did make that call out, and, um, we made sure that our providers are focusing their efforts, um, on those priorities zip codes. And we can, uh, yeah, sorry, Councilmember Reed. And we can definitely provide a report of the results of that as the summer activities, um, complete.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, and so, um, again, this is an informational, uh, item. I think we, we've heard, uh, that there are some important areas for follow-up, uh, including the website, uh, more positions, and more ease of coordination of application. Um, seeing no further hands in the queue, is there a motion to receive the report? And that is along with the, uh, direction that the, the PowerPoint will be uploaded as an infomemo so that everyone can read it at their leisure.
I'll move.
Second.
All right, uh, motion by Fife, seconded by Gao to receive the report? May call the roll.
The motion moved by Councilmember Fife, seconded by Councilmember Gao to receive and file this report. Councilmember Fife?
Aye.
Councilmember Gao?
Aye.
Councilmember called?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kaplan?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor? Councilmember Quoten Tao?
Aye.
Council President Bass?
Aye.
Report is received and filed with a vote of eight ayes.
Thank you so much. Um, item eight, uh, has been agreed to be deferred to the next meeting. And so we may go to item nine.
Item nine, receive an information report regarding city's compliance with the Public Records Act settlement in Scott Morris, Sarah Bell Lynn, Brian Crans, Michael Katz, and Oakland Privacy versus City of Oakland Police Department, Susan Manheimer in her official capacity, and Ed Riskin in his official capacity.
Thank you so much. Uh, we may have the report. Thank you.
Thank you. This is Cynthia Stein from the city attorney's office. I'll make this very quick since I know council has, um, the report. Um, just in a very quick summary, um, this is the lawsuit, uh, filed by journalists on behalf of a class of individuals who alleged that they, um, had received, uh, or had not, rather not received responses to, uh, requests under the Public Records Act for Oakland Police Department records. Um, the city entered into a proposed settlement last fall that was noticed to a class of affected individuals. Um, no one objected to that settlement, and the court finalized that in March of this year. Um, there are two, so the settlement has been in effect since March. There are two elements to it, two major components to it. One is the sort of backwards-looking, clearing the backlog of pending, uh, requests for Oakland Police Department public records that were pending at the time the settlement was approved. And the second piece of it is, um, moving forward in agreement, um, to a number of measures designed to ensure that, um, the city responds to requests for OPD records expeditiously, uh, moving forward. And it also requires a report of, of the first two months of the settlement period, which is the, um, why we are presenting to this council today. Um, so just sort of the, the report has the summary, but, um, essentially the city is in compliance, substantial compliance with every element of the settlement. Um, as far as the backlog goes, at the time that the suit was filed, they, plaintiffs alleged there were around five thousand pending, uh, requests for OPD records that were pending. Um, and at the time of the settlement, that had dwindled down to a bit over four hundred and fifty. And in the first two months, the OPD cleared, or the city, rather, the city cleared, uh, about thirty-eight percent of those, um, bringing it down to around two hundred and eighty-two. That is on pace to meet the demands of the settlement. Um, for requests for police personnel records, uh, relating to misconduct under, that are disclosable under SB fourteen twenty-one, those were categorized separately. Um, and with respect to those, there were about a hundred and twenty-three requests pending at the time of the settlement. Um, the city has produced over five hundred documents in those first two months and has produced at least some responsive documents, um, in about, as to, uh, in a, in response to about twenty percent of those pending, uh, of those pending, um, requests. And the city has a little bit longer to produce those, but we also expect that we are on track to meet that backlog demand as well. Um, finally, with respect to the forward-looking provisions, um, in the time period that we are reporting on, OPD received about nine hundred and fifty public records requests. So it just gets a sense of the volume that the city is dealing with. Um, and, and really performed quite well. Um, is responding in, on an average of one to two days for sort of the non-SB fourteen twenty-one requests, and in an average of approximately two weeks for the SB fourteen twenty-one police personnel requests. Um, it is estimating that it will produce documents in about a couple of weeks after getting the request. And then it's actually meeting that its own estimated deadline. And then it's actually meeting that its own estimated deadline approximately 97% of the time. So we are meeting, or substantially, at least substantially meeting all of the benchmarks that we set, and we think we're in good shape to be in full compliance with the terms of the settlement. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And we have Chief Armstrong is here from OPD. I think he's here, he may be in transit right now, but he's been online and I believe is here, also Deputy Director of Human Services, County Subtle, and Assistant Chief Darren Allison, as well as obviously representatives of the City Attorney's Office.
Thank you very much for that report. Colleagues, are there any questions at this time? Seeing none, is there a motion to receive the report?
So moved.
Seconded.
So motion by Reed, seconded by Gaio, to receive the report, may call the roll.
On the motion to receive and file the report, moved by Councilmember Reed, seconded by Councilmember Gaio. Councilmember Five?
Aye.
Councilmember Gaio?
Aye.
Councilmember Cobb?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kaplan?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Quoten Town?
Aye.
President Bass?
Aye.
Item is received and filed with a vote of eight ayes. Are we going to item ten next?
Thank you so much, colleagues. So let me just take a process check. It is now after 10:00 PM. I know we've been going for a great many hours, and there was some discussion earlier in the day about whether we would look at the measures collectively on the 11th. So let me just check in and also check back with our council president, process-wise, on where you want to go from here. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, for chairing and giving me a little bit of a break. We do have four more ballot items plus one policy, which is related to one of the ballot items. And it is my desire to have some level of discussion so that we can discuss, debate, and also hear any amendments so that if these are moved to the 11th, we also have more information than the public does as well. So I know it's really late. I know some of you might have other time constraints, but I do want to encourage us to maintain our quorum and give these ballot measures a fair hearing. City Attorney Parker?
Yes, Madam President. I, for your consideration, you could continue this meeting to tomorrow when people are fresh. I don't know what people's schedules are. You can continue it for up to five days, but that wouldn't be in workable. I just think that people may be waiting a bit, and if you want to have that discussion, it might be more productive if people can move their calendars around and continue the meeting tomorrow.
Yes, that is always an option. Keep in mind that the next scheduled meeting is the 11th. Items would be due to the packet Thursday at 4:00. So there's also that consideration. But I will entertain comments from the council in terms of keeping going now versus other Councilmember Taylor?
Let's go for it. This is Christopher.
That is my preference. Okay. And Madam Clerk, please read in the next item.
Item 10, a resolution on the City Council's motion submitting to the voters after November 8, 2022's general municipal election and advisory measure on spending public funds for infrastructure and other costs related to the development of the Oakland Athletics Baseball Stadium and real estate project at Howard Terminal.
Thank you. Councilmember Gaio, would you like to introduce your item?
Yes, thank you. I want to first of all thank the members of the public, our neighbors, our residents, and also the city attorney for helping us develop the language that's before you, to make sure that the legalities are all met and all the regulations and so forth. And so this item, this item is from the public, and we represent the public that elected us. Came at their request to ask the city council to put this on the ballot in November as an advisory vote. And the reason why I was asked is, I think we've been, and all of us recognize for a number of years now, two, three years, we've been in discussion regarding Howard Terminal in terms of the A's leaving the Coliseum. And for the record, I want to make it very clear, I've been an A's fan all my life. You know, I attended, supported the A's, and have a great deal of respect for the business of baseball. And I would still prefer them to be at the Coliseum and continue to develop it, grow it. And certainly, you have all the transportation means from the airport, the bar, the bus, the highways that we, as taxpayers, paid for to make sure that that Coliseum continue to be a professional site for sports. And also, we are still paying for it, considering the fact that the Raiders left with the same argument that is being presented today, and also the Warriors. And you all know that you were here, that we had to go to court three times to get the $30 million from the Warriors to give back to the city of Oakland. And so we have, for those of you that don't know the history, even I think Rebecca would understand that this is not the first time that the A's have chose a different location to build a stadium. When I got on the council, they were moving to Freeman. They were going to the city of Freeman. That didn't work out. Then they were going to San Jose. They had to land everything in place, except the Giants said, no, you're not going to take our fans from us. And they stayed in Oakland. And so what you have before you is a public request as an advisory to be able to make sure that the citizens of Oakland are not going to be held responsible for not only the federal and state funds that could be used to rebuild West Oakland, to rebuild the streets in East Oakland, to provide safety throughout our city, but also to make sure that it is clearly defined. Because as of today, I still don't have a complete picture, what are the A's asking for, and what are the A's offering and willing to pay or develop? And that's why, when this item came up, Carol Five and I, you know, I had asked the city council or the administration to provide an economic financial analysis in terms of Howard Terminal. Because my conversations with the two previous city managers, they had said that they had opposed, they would oppose Howard Terminal based on the cost and the needs for the public to be able to pay. So not only property taxes, paying off bonds, tax increments, and then at the end, if there are any cost overruns, well, the residents would have to pay for that. And so for me, it's very clear from the public, and at first, I didn't even agree on the first with them, that I would like to take it to the November election to be able to receive what is the plan, what is the actual financial obligations that the residents of Oakland, not so much the city council, the residents of Oakland would have to pay now, through the 10-year process of developing Howard Terminal? And afterwards, when once it's developed, because the A's only agreed for a 20-year contract. And so I want to bring that up to you, for your consideration, and not only is there concern within the residents, but I also have a resolution with our asses from the African-American Sports and Entertainment Group that we had contracted with to develop the Coliseum. And they provided this for me last week to bring to the council, to hopefully direct the council and the administrator to get the Oakland A's to sit down with them, to begin negotiating on the Coliseum, since they already own half of it, and we have the other half. And the African-American Sports and Entertainment Group, they have the investors that are willing to put in millions to get the project started. They also have, you know, some deadlines that they have to make with the E&amp;A and some other environmental, but yet there's no cooperation or negotiation with the Oakland A's to get that Coliseum built, rebuilt, or at least make it where it's manageable for the citizens of Oakland to better utilize that property. So, you know, I can go on, but due to the interest of time, the request is very clear, the residents, your neighbors, my neighbors, the ones that elected us, they're asking us to be able to have this information on the ballot. And I think at the end of the day, we have to recognize, this is a business. The Fisher family's multi-billionaire, it's not so much about Oakland, but it's about, it's a business of how do we generate dollars for my account? And that's pretty much the way I see this developing into, is not so much, so this action we're taking is not so much about baseball, but it's what is in the best interest of the city of Oakland, considering the many needs from the homeless to the public safety issue, to our schools that we have today. And I've lived here all my life, and I've never seen Oakland to the way it is today.
Thank you.
And certainly, we have that responsibility to meet that obligation, because that's certainly, for me, that's a priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up is Councilmember Five.
Thank you, Council President Bass. I just wanted to clarify a few things, and we still have our translator's office, correct?
Through the chair, they log off, they too.
But, Madam Clerk, so I will, I will just say that I know there's been a lot of misinformation that's been going around, and there are people who are A's supporters that feel like the East Oakland Stadium Alliance is misinforming people, and there's people from the supporters of the A's that think that, it's vice versa, that everyone is saying that there's misinformation going around. But I want to start with number one, the inaccurate statement that this referendum would cost at least $1 million to the voters of Oakland. That wasn't true in March when it was stated, and it's not true today. I wanted to clarify that. I also want to clarify for the record that it will not cost, that it will actually cost Oakland taxpayers' funds in moving forward with this project. And the ballpark is 1/12 of the development. And the ballpark is privately funded. That is true. But the reality is, there's a lot more that needs to be funded for this project to take place. And the funds that are generated, if it moves forward, will stay in that location for decades. So I just want to be really clear, because there's misinformation going on in a lot of places. And if we're going to tell the truth, we need to tell the truth all the way around. And the fact that we're getting funds from the federal, state, and other government entities doesn't mean that that's not taxpayer money. It's all taxpayer money. It's not just magic private dollars that go into grants that would fund infrastructure development. And it's disingenuous to say that what marginalized communities in West Oakland need is to be connected to the waterfront. There's so many deep needs that arise from the state of Oakland right now, that we need to really, really be cautious about how we utilize our dollars. And I know there are a lot of people that have projected my position or have put words in my mouth about where I stand, but the truth is, where we started and where we are now, is that I want clarity, and I want answers, and I want to know what the city of Oakland residents will be on the hook for, and we still haven't received that. And the last I heard from the A's is that there's an additional $300 million that's needed to close the gap for funding for this project. And I think if we're going to utilize that kind of money that the city of Oakland residents have to pay for generations to come, they should have a voice. They should have a say in that. So while I didn't draft this particular legislation, I want to be clear that I do support Oakland voters having a say in how their tax money will be spent. I've had several town halls, Zoom meetings, community meetings. I've been to town nights last week at two different locations, and people in the streets, they're all telling me the same thing, let me have a say. It doesn't mean that you support it or you don't support it, they just want to have a say. And what's the fear in letting people voice their decision through an advisory vote? It's not going to delay a project that doesn't exist. They just want to have a say, that if their funds are going to be used, then they should get to tell us what they want to see. And as elected officials, even if this doesn't move forward today, it will be in front of voters in November. It'll just be in the form of who they vote for for reelection. So I just want to be really clear. And with that, Madam Chair, I am complete.
Thank you. Okay, let's hear from other council members. I also invite the city administration and staff to chime in here as well. Let's go first to Councilmember Cobb, and then we'll hear from Betsy Lake.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam President, and thank you, Councilmember Gaio, for bringing this forward. I appreciate all the things that you said, as well as the things that Councilmember Five said. As I mentioned in Rules Committee, I'm not prepared yet to bring this, to bring whatever the this is, and I don't even know what this is yet, we don't have a deal in front of us, to a vote of the citizens. But I see a possible scenario, I hope it doesn't come to play, but there's a possible scenario that when the deal does come to us and doesn't have certain things that I need to see in it, at that point, I would support it. And if that's a special election, just on this measure, like in January, so be it. But I want them to, I want them to understand that we need to see certain things, I think all of us in the council recall the things we asked for, and there's still negotiations underway. And one of the key things that is outstanding is that I want to see, and this relates to the money question that people have been asking, I want to see ironclad legally binding financial backstops in the proposal, whatever comes before us, the development agreement, what have you, that says if the infrastructure financing district falls short of projections, if there are cost overruns in the infrastructure that these decree to pay for, if, 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 that the city's general fund and the city's dedicated ongoing funding sources that we already have coming to us, general fund or not, that those are protected, that the things we already get and already spend money on are protected, and that these additional costs, if it turns out those additional expenditures are needed to get things to be finished, will be paid for by the A's. The A's are the financial backstop, not the city's ongoing funds and general funds. That's what I need to see. If those financial ironclad backstops are in the deal that comes before us, whenever that comes before us in the fall, then I'm okay with us making a decision. I don't know how I'm going to vote on that, but at least I'm okay not having to go to the voters. If those ironclad backstops, and I hope the A's are listening to this, or at least I hope they play this tape, if those ironclad backstops are not in the deal that comes before us, I will vote to put this on the ballot at a special election. I'm saying that publicly again. So that's my position. I'm not going to vote for this today, but I might vote for it in the future down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Betsy Lake with the administration.
Thank you, Council President. Elizabeth Lake, Assistant City Administrator. And I wanted to just touch on three points as you consider this issue. One is, I wanted to provide a reminder and a clarification of what we are negotiating with respect to the waterfront ballpark district, talk a little bit about the public outreach process, and then explain some of staff's concern about the proposed ballot measure. So first, Councilmember Cobb is right, we don't have a deal yet to vote on, but it is important to restate that it was this council's clear direction for staff to negotiate a deal that is within the framework approved by the council on July 2021. And that framework requires that the deal not impact the general fund or our current Oakland taxpayers, and that it is beneficial to the city. And that is really the North Star that we are following. And although we're still negotiating, the main deal points remain, and those include, as Councilmember Five said, that the stadium would be 100% privately financed by the Oakland A's. All the residential and commercial development in the district would be 100% privately financed by the would be 100% privately financed by the As. The deal would tax the As as a future owner of the project site and leverage those As' tax dollars to fund new public infrastructure and affordable housing, both on the project site as well as in the four impacted districts surrounding it, Jack London Downtown, West Oakland and Chinatown, uh, and build, uh, 18 acres of new public parks on the Oakland waterfront. And with respect to offsite infrastructure, most of which will implement existing city plans, policies, and the city council's approved capital improvement program, it would be funded by federal, state and regional grants, which of course is the normal way the city obtains money for such transportation infrastructure. Second, I do want to remind everyone of the extensive public participation that has been, um, a hallmark of this project. There have been many opportunities for public participation already and more to come. Thousands of Oaklanders have already expressed their opinions through public comment, public information workshops, extensive engagement to develop community benefits recommendations and more. And in fact, since 2019, more than 100 meetings have been held, including over a dozen public meetings at, uh, the city council, the Port, Alameda County Board of Supervisors, Bay Conservation Development Commission, um, as some examples. And it's not over yet. Uh, going forward, before any deal at the former Howard Terminal site can be approved, there will be numerous additional opportunities for public comment and input. Once the deal is final with staff, the project will go in front of the Planning Commission, will hold a hearing at the CED and it will proceed to two hearings at the city council. And importantly, as many of you have, um, mentioned, um, once we have the final deal, we'll be bringing a full economic analysis of the deal to CED, just like we did with the term sheet in the summer of 2021. And that analysis is easily available on the city's website and will be thoroughly updated to reflect the final deal terms and to provide our decision makers and the public with full and transparent information, uh, just like we did in July of 2021. Then even after the city council, the public process isn't done. The project must be approved by the Port, the Bay Conservation Development Commission, the Department of Toxic Substances Control, the State Lands Commission. And each of these processes are open and transparent, providing opportunities for the public to provide decision makers with their advice and perspective. So finally, in addition to, um, our concern that this measure would interfere with what the council has directed us to do with respect to this particular project, staff is concerned with the following issues presented by the ballot measure. One, it's vague. It asks our residents whether they agree with using, quote, "public funding" uh, to fund infrastructure, which is technically the way government funds almost all public infrastructure. Pursuing grants and utilizing tax increment financing are essential economic development tools without which we wouldn't have been able to create treasured community assets like restoring the Fox Theater, the Rotunda, Children's Hospital Research Institute, or develop projects like Uptown, MacArthur Bar, Coliseum Bar Station and Fruit Belt Bar Station projects. And it is advisory, which means it's non-binding and therefore does amount to what we would consider a, a fairly expensive survey that would create delay and doubt for the project, which is still under negotiation. Um, meaning again, there's not yet a project to vote on or agree or disagree with. So in a nutshell, staff is concerned that the proposed measure would undermine what this council voted for and directed us to do. With that, turn it back.
Thank you. Okay, colleagues, looking for others to weigh in here?
Madam President, if there's no one else, I'm just...
Okay, do you see Councilmember Taylor with his hand up? Go ahead, Councilmember.
Thing, I was waiting on somebody else to go, but, uh, I'll go ahead and jump in with my thoughts. So, um, I definitely hear the, those who express their concern there, uh, around being able to have a, a, a say in a vote and be, uh, a part of the process. I want to acknowledge that staff have done a significant amount of engagement already and in many different, uh, forums across the city, um, uh, through the community benefits process and so many others that I've been able to be a part of and many that I haven't been able to be a part of just because there's been so much. Um, I also hear that, um, there's a, a... I wanted to acknowledge that there are some of the, those who are against having a vote that were saying, hey, well, residents can't, uh, are unable to assess all of the details and the nuance of the project. And, and I wanted to wholeheartedly disagree with that and acknowledge that we've got some very smart, intelligent residents here in Oakland that absolutely can do as good of a job as we are doing on the council, uh, in terms of going through all the details and data and everything else. Um, to me, the issue is that the current ballot measure is worded, it's, it, it's worded as a terrible question. It's extremely vague. It doesn't provide any real value or information that will be helpful in an advisory capacity. Um, so yeah, wholeheartedly disagree that with the public speakers that said our residents are unable to assess the details and the nuance of the project. I believe that, you know, our educated Oakland voters are not stupid. The ballot question is stupid. It's dumbed down in a way that is confusing, nonspecific, uninformativ-, uh, and I think the one commenter had it right. Based on the current question, we won't know if a voter is voting against Dave Cavill and John Fisher. They're voting against moving the As from the Coliseum. They're voting against having 35% affordable housing instead of 50% affordable housing or voting against the use of condominium transfer fees to fund a portion of the community benefits or not. Um, and that level of just not being specific is going to be very uninformativ- is not going to help us out and we're going to be in a worse off situation at the end if this is what moves forward. Um, if there was a survey or a ballot measure, advisory, whatever you want to call it, for me to be supportive of it, it would have to be, uh, very targeted and specific in terms of highlighting the deal terms and having that be the question and not the backup materials, uh, if someone were to double click, uh, or read through a pamphlet, uh, you know, that sort of thing. And so the things that would need to be in the question that are asked are, you know, the amount of city of Oakland revenues that are committed to the project that would exist regardless of whether the project were to happen. The amount of city Oakland revenues committed to the project that would only exist if the project were to be completed. The amount of city dollars at risk if the revenues, uh, come in lower than it projected. Uh, the amount of affordable housing units that are committed to be developed, both onsite and offsite, the amount of construction jobs that will be created, the amount of ongoing jobs that will be created, the amount of current tax revenues from Howard Terminal coming to the city of Oakland and the amount of annual tax revenues that are, that will be coming to the city of Oakland upon project completion. None of that detail is in the question, which means that it's not going to be an informed answer, not because we don't have, you know, intelligent residents, but because we're not actually framing the question in a way that will be informative and, and helpful. And so that, to me, is the concern with what we have. As is, I would not be able to support this, uh, measure if there was a much more thorough question, uh, perhaps, but I did want to just be on the record that, um, we're not setting ourselves up for success with what's proposed. And that's my fear and concern, uh, with respect to what's being proposed.
Thank you. Councilmember Guyo?
Yes, I'd like to respond to, to that. You know, again, I, I understand what is being said, but you know, Lauren, but you have to recognize, we've been at this for years. We just didn't start this negotiation and planning. So you want to keep delaying it, delaying it, delaying it, more talk, more talk. Even, even the African American Sports Entertainment Group, the African American Sports Entertainment Group gave me resolution because there's no cooperation. That is not, that's public land that we own half, that we want to develop. That we want to develop, make sure that East Oakland thrives like it used to. But you want to keep talking, talking about it? Where is the plan, city staffers? We should have had that city council. But for me, having it come from the public is the motivation to get the job done. Provide the information that I requested and that's going to get done in September. So at least Lauren Taylor will have some numbers. Because right now you don't have any too. You're absolutely right. You're just talking. You're talk, I can ask a million questions, but what motivate me, and thanks to Carol Fife for bringing the item, what motivated me? Right now you have about, what, 15,000 letters that are signed. We get emails daily. We get phone calls daily from the public due to the fact that what's going on in your streets, Lauren Taylor. I've never seen Oakland the mess that it is today. So I want to get that job done, members of the city administration. I want to get those streets fixed. I want to get my schools open. And we, and we don't have that information to get it done? Oh no, let's do another study. You can do all kinds of other things. So for me, Madam Chairperson, I, I will make a motion to honor the request of the public with all due respect to each one of you, to get it on the ballot that'll force us to make sure that we get out there and negotiate and get the information and get the, whatever it's going to cost the city, taxpayers, dollars, that we, we should have that information in front of us now. Because you do, you, you know, I have the history of the Raiders. The As are out there negotiating on Las Vegas daily, using us to leverage more resources from Las Vegas. That's how committed they are, Lauren Taylor. And that's how committed they were going to Fremont and going to San Jose. And, uh, but anyways, with all, I'm, Madam, uh, Chairperson, I'll go ahead and, and leave it at that, but I'll make a motion and let, uh, honor the voters' requests and get it on the ballot for November. And let us do the work to make sure we have the information to vote upon. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Fife?
Yes, I'll just, um, briefly make a couple comments based on what Betsy Lake said, which is that thousands of Oakland residents have participated in this process. And I'll say, since I've been on council, it's been consistently restated to me that the, the community that is requested to be a part of this process are community members that have already agreed to, um, bring the As to Howard Terminal. So it's in essence saying, we don't want to talk to people who have questions. We don't want to talk to people to allay their fears. We don't want to discuss any additional anything unless you agree to the project. I've been told that by city staff, included, including staff from the city administrator's office on several occasions. And I don't believe that's how you get the best deal for Oakland, even if you want the stadium at Howard Terminal. I think that there needs to be more aggressive negotiation that is not happening. And why would it when the As are paying for our legal, our, our legal advice and, and other things, which I understand is also part of the process? But still, um, it's, there, there's just a lot that's disingenuous about this, this whole process. And once again, I believe that we should tell the truth. And I, I don't believe Oakland voters are stupid. They have to weigh in on a lot, nor do I believe, as was stated by one of our council colleagues, that this is a dumbed down question. And I think that's quite disrespectful to, to label Councilmember Guyo in that way. So I just wanted to say that I will second this motion, Councilmember Guyo. And, uh, I think we need to continue to move the agenda and this conversation.
Thank you. So we have a motion in a second. I will allow comments from, uh, any councilmembers who haven't yet spoken on this item. Vice Mayor Kaplan.
Thank you very much. And, and, and Councilmember Guyo, I, I heard you say something that I thought was really interesting just now about the importance of making sure that the negotiations around Coliseum proceed. And I just wanted to double check whether you were saying that that would be embedded in this item or you would bring that as a separate item. And I just want to restate how much I respect your leadership on that and my interest in working with you on that.
Yes, that's a separate item that has already been written, all the wear asses and resolution written by the, the African American Sports Entertainment, Entertainment Group. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Well, I look forward to following up on that separately, given that. And then my question to staff, this is, uh, in some ways related to what Councilmember Kalb was asking, is what does staff expect would be the timeline by which we would have a better sense of the nuts and bolts and dollars and cents, uh, of the proposal? Thank you.
Okay, let's hear that, um, answer. When the staff is ready, please raise your hand. And in the meantime, um, I'll go first to Councilmember Tal.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I just wanted to appreciate, uh, Councilmember Guyo for, for you continuing to, uh, lead the charge in what you, in your values and what you believe. Uh, I think that is why we are all elected, right? Uh, uh, we go out and we, uh, campaign on our values and you're sticking with your values and I, I really appreciate that and I respect that. And, um, in regards to, I'm excited to actually hear an actual proposal, hopefully sometime soon. I know that in the Rules Committee, we scheduled your item, Mr. Councilmember Guyo, to September 20th to hear the cost benefit analysis. So I look forward to that and I'm in the same vote, uh, Councilmember Guyo today. I'm in the same vote as Councilmember Kalb. You know, if there needs to be a special election that is called, when we do get that proposal so that we can see the cost benefit analysis, then I am all for that, um, but not, uh, but can't vote with you today. But I do appreciate your values and what you bring. And, um, yeah, I just want to say thank you for continuing that.
Thank you. Um, let's go to Betsy Lake.
Yes, through the chair, with a, with respect to the question on the timeline, um, you know, we are hoping to come back to the council in this fall um, with the deal that we can analyze. Um, we can't actually have the analysis until we have reached a final deal. So it's, um, it's our hope and expectation that, uh, that we'll be back in, in the fall.
Thank you. Councilmember Reed?
Thank you. I'll just, uh, to the conversation. Um, we had a town hall for District Seven. And one of the things, outside of a number of questions that were asked, and one of the things that we heard from those who were hearing and, and listening to the Port, to the city, um, and to the As, is that they want to hear the deal. They want to understand and have full transparency on the deal. They, they have questions that are still awaiting to be answered. They want to see the financial analysis. They want to understand more on the community benefits. And those are all things that I fully support. Transparency, outreach, engagement, education. I've asked for that for day one. And that is what I'm hearing. I certainly heard also our District Seven, um, neighbors who called in. And we've had people calling in and emailing our office directly since this meeting has taken place today, asking again for more details, more information before we ask them to weigh in on a particular ballot measure that they would like to ensure that their voice may be lifted up on. And so I agree that there's more information that's needed. I wish that there would have been a detailed information report for this item outside of the legislation that's been provided. Um, I believe that it's important for voters to also know the cost associated with all of the ballot measures that we are weighing, um, today. Uh, I understand that ballot measures might, on average, be over $1 million and someone can correct me or clarify that as well for the public to understand as we're considering a number of ballot measures. But there are still questions. There's still information. There is still a lack of information for well, for, 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 I'm going to take up for my district also, very bright and engaged voters to make, um, a decision on information with the deal. And so I am going to wait for them to have the information that they are asking for to weigh in as voters on a measure. Uh, they have certainly had, um, a lack of clarity with information that they're receiving and they want to have the information in writing. And so I believe that an information report on that analysis is going to be critical for the voters to see and weigh in on anything that we're asking them to uplift their vote on. And so I regret also, Councilmember Guyo, that I will not be able to stand with you with a, this decision that you would like to have today. Um, but knowing that every decision that we make is impactful to East Oakland with measures. And I believe that Ms. Lake stated, um, and we can certainly have her confirm, um, the total public dollars associated that we know today that will be committed to this pri- we know today that will be committed to this project development. If there is any analysis that can be stated on that funding gap that was addressed, what would be needed additionally, or how much public funds the As have requested in resources that would impact meeting our urgent needs of the city and especially in areas like East Oakland that were stated, I believe that all of those things and many more questions that we have that we are also looking for city staff's response on are helpful to us and especially to the voters that I represent, who are still seeking information and clarity to weigh in on this impactful decision.
Thank you. I'll share some of my own comments, and then we will call the question. So like many of my colleagues, I do want to share first appreciations to Councilmember Gao as well as Councilmember Fife, who is the councilmember of the district where this project would be. I hear loud and clear from literally dozens, hundreds, thousands of Oaklanders, you know, my email box is full, I have reams of paper in my office, having heard from Oaklanders. I walk down the street and I hear from Oaklanders too. So I am taking all of this public comment very seriously. I also am the councilmember that represents Chinatown, which is about a mile away from the proposed project that will be impacted, just like Chinatown would have been impacted by the prior proposed site for the, for the ballpark. And I want, I do want my constituents to know, I want Oaklanders to know that as the District Two representative, as the council president, I am listening to all sides on this issue. I definitely hear people who are concerned about what the public investment would be, who are concerned about the impact to our port and our port economy, and I also hear very much Oaklanders who are excited about what this opportunity could be, who want to keep the As rooted in Oakland. So those are incredible decisions that we have to take into account with all of that information and public input. And I want to remind us that as your council president, I have been working to ensure that we have a strong framework, we have accountability, we will get our questions answered when the final deal comes to us. And again, there is no deal yet, but we did pass a framework in July of last year that lays out what we as the council want to see. And in addition to that, in February, we passed a resolution, which I co-authored together with Vice Mayor Kaplan and Councilmember Cobb, which lays out specifically, before the development agreement comes to this council, we will get the financial report, which Councilmember Gao has scheduled, we will get a detailed report on what the community benefits concretely will be, we have to hear about the affordable housing that we have put out as our goal, we have to hear about what the jobs policies will be, which is related to what the port needs to deliver, we also need to hear what the plan is for making this seaport continue to thrive. So all of those things will come to us before the development agreement is signed off on and voted upon by this council, in addition to all the other bodies that you've heard about that will consider this project. So I, I, I want everyone to know that my job as council president is to make sure that we are doing our due diligence before we make decisions, we are listening, we are hearing what your concerns are, we are getting answers, and that we will fully vet this project because there's both a lot of opportunity and a lot of questions. So with that, I, I am not ready to put this on the ballot. I think we do need to have a deal so that we have the actual information about the numbers, the level of affordable housing, all of those things that we have already mentioned and put into resolutions that we want to know as a council. So I will not be able to support this today, but I am fully committed to making sure that we have a transparent process, we get our questions answered, and that we do allow for even more public participation than already exists through all of our meetings. So with that, I am ready to call the question. Councilmember Reed, I saw your hand just went up, if you could be brief.
Yes. Go ahead. Through the chair, I just want to clarify, Councilmember Cobb made mention, and perhaps it might be helpful to the public, with this process, certainly, you know, hearing that, you know, we're, we certainly prioritize making sure that we take care of our community and uplifting the, the voice of the voters over some of the things that were stated in public comments. But Councilmember Cobb mentioned potentially bringing a ballot measure forth in January. Can someone speak to what that process is? If this ballot measure today is not supported, what that opportunity could be? Is that appropriate for someone to address, to give clarity on what was meant by that comment for a potential restating or reworking as we gain more information for a future ballot measure?
Sure. Councilmember Cobb, do you want to speak to that?
Sure, just to clarify, all, all I was saying was that if the proposal that does come before us, let's say in the fall, as, as Ms. Lake is suggesting, that, and it doesn't have what I or we feel is needed in terms of financial security, financial ironclad backstops, as I articulated a little while ago, then at that time, we can choose to create a special election. Now, there's a whole process to do that with the county, but, but cities are allowed to call special elections for ballot measures if we want to. I don't think there's anything in our charter prohibiting us from doing that. And so when that special election would be, would be, would be determined when we deal with that at the council. I'm not suggesting I want that or I expect that to happen, but that's always an option we have on the table if we feel the deal before us should go to the voters at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Call the question.
All right, we have the motion and second on the floor. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Item 10 moved by Councilmember Gao, seconded by Councilmember Fife. Councilmember Fife?
Clerk, Madam Clerk? I do see Councilmember Fife's hand up. Councilmember Fife?
Through the chair, to the clerk or perhaps the city attorney, what would be the, wouldn't the cost of a special election be more than the cost of putting something on the ballot for November?
Yeah. Call the question. Jeez Louise.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to check.
Yes, it works, certainly.
I'm just seeing, okay, thank you. I'm prepared to vote.
Item 10 moved by Councilmember Gao, seconded by Councilmember Fife. Councilmember Fife?
Aye.
Councilmember Gao?
Aye.
Councilmember Cobb?
No.
Council, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Kaplan?
Abstain.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Pro Tim Tao?
No.
Council President Boss?
No.
Motion fails with a vote of two ayes, five noes, one abstention.
There you go, folks.
Okay.
So, we live on the fight another day.
Thank you, everyone who's been engaging on this, and thank you, councilmembers Gao and Fife. I know that was not the outcome that you wanted, but hopefully the discussion was helpful. I think we are committed to ensuring there is even more information and more process participation transparency going forward.
Let me leave that one. I'll leave that one because that's one thing, really causing a lot of disruption. Okay. All right, five to two with one abstention. I know that's Rebecca's because she's running for Oakland Alameda County Supervisor, District Three seat that Loma Chan helped, and so that's why, 32 assassin, that's why she abstained. It's political. So dodged a gigantic bullet that really looked for a moment like it was going to go the wrong way. I've got two live streams, this one and this one, and it's really great. The next steps are these. First of all, for me, this matter of the project has to be put on a fast track. It's got to be under the guise of a public financing authority. It's not. It's all over the place, it's unstructured, you don't know who is exchanging documents, what the status of those document exchanges are, you don't know anything that you would know if this were done like the Oakland-Alameda County Coliseum, the Powers Authority, when the Warrior, Warriors Arena was being built and there were constant updates, you could track what was going on, because it's a legislative deliberative body, or the Las Vegas Stadium Authority that built what we now call Legion Stadium, where you can, to this day, go back as far as 2016 and see all the project reports and all of the status reports on the project. There's nothing like that for this project. It is not done right, okay? And so because it isn't done right, and yet you have a lot of media attention, a lot of public people asking about it, you get this. This is what you get. He says, I, no, the As believe it's worth it, the trouble is, is Major League Baseball that is, you know, doing this and saying, hey, look, what's going on? These are clear problems that you get with an activist government that doesn't understand administration, and that's where we are today, folks. You have people who are used to getting out there and getting on the streets or pretending like they're down or, or woke, which is fine, but when it comes to actually getting a project done, okay? And that's where we're at. And so the same people who claim to want to help people who don't have a lot, don't understand how to pull levers of government to make government work for the people in need. Howard Terminal legislation, SB 293 Skinner was designed to do just that. But the problem is that it's not being implemented correctly, and we are seeing the results. The results are a confused public and an overture. I, my prediction is will not be the last time this sort of thing happens, okay? But what I'm looking at next is will Phil Ruffin buy the flamingo? Because I have a feeling the Athletics are waiting for Phil Ruffin to buy the flamingo. I believe that's where they want to put the ballpark, okay? And he says, does this mean the mayor and her team, the, the mayor and her team have done a piss poor job? Great question, Eric. They have done a lousy job over this. I, unfortunately, you know, my interview with the mayor was distorted, but I'm going to continue to put out bits and pieces of it so you can hear what we talked about. Because I said to her that if I were doing the project, we would establish the public financing authority right now, which would give sunshine, which means you, the public, would be able to ask where Howard Terminal is, what's the status about different documents, who's involved, everything. You don't have that ability, okay? That's, that's a, that's an enormous, enormous problem. But I'm going to stop this video, it's 201 in the east, I'm going to finish the live stream up here mainly because my computer's, my Mac is about to crash under the weight, but this is the Mac, but I'm on live here, okay? I've got this live stream going, as you can see, all right? This is the other live stream I'm going to have going. So, but this is the wrap up, okay? And, and so anyway, I want to thank everybody for joining me, get some sleep, those of you who are up late. We'll see you tomorrow, okay? And I'll take this up again tomorrow, another live stream. I'm going to stop the one here, this one. See you, John Marks and everybody. We'll see you guys very soon, all right? Subscribe to Zenny62, bookmark Oakland News Now Blog.com. Great, great victory, that ends this broadcast. Okay.